Welcome to the City of New Franklin, Wednesday, January nineteenth. We have four first readings and one second reading today. Our first reading will be with Finance Committee, Mr. Cott.
Perfect. We will open a Finance Committee meeting at six zero two. Starting now, the first reading, twenty-two R zero four. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Pogmeier Design Group to conduct a comprehensive plan update. And this is, we've been talking about the comprehensive plan and updating it for quite a while. We had, we put out a bid for organizations to help us with comprehensive plans. We had three, three people offer to help us out. And so out of the three, we formed a committee to look at the three. We had them come in for interviews and the committee unanimously selected Pogmeier as being the choice to go with. Their bid came in at sixty thousand dollars and it was kind of mid-range between the three. They're the ones that helped set up our original comprehensive plan. So they have a good idea of the city and they have a lot of history already with the plans. So they don't have to repeat any stuff that's already been done. Very professional organization. They've been around for, people we work with over twenty-five years each. Lot of knowledge you have in your packet, some information on them. A very strong organization. It's worked really well for us. Mr. Barrett, do you have some thoughts on this?
I agree with what you said. And it's, it's a little different cast of characters. The primary director, Paul Appa Penelli, he's got one of those long legs. Anyway, he's still with them. But the consultant that led the comprehensive plan last time around in two thousand two, two thousand four is maybe part of the team this year. So there's still, there's a fresh look there in that sense as well. And I thought the committee did a really nice job of vetting the three that proposed. And I have no doubt that Pogmeier has an idea of what we want to try to accomplish. And they're very skilled and so I think they're going to, you know, I think they're a good fit. I appreciate the work that the committee did. It was very, I mean, they spent a lot of time previewing these and also in the interviews. That was an all-day deal with the interviews. And then reconvene the following day and spend more than hour hours, couple hours, reaching a final consensus, which turned out to be.
And this group, and I was part of the committee to look at the three groups. This group was, was very focused on community involvement, getting people involved in the process, having numerous meetings with public to give the public the opportunity to understand the importance. So they were talking about that before we were talking about that. So it's very much part of their game plan. They've done this all over, all over the country. In the last couple of years, they merged with an international organization. So they have resources across the world for different things, different specialties that may, may pop up that they could, they could work with. I don't know. We're just very pleased with them and very pleased with their presentation.
And one of the things we discussed and asked them is, is this going to be a fresh plan? Or is this going to be sort of an update? And the answer is it's a fresh plan. That the original plan will be a historical document that provides a foundation for where we were then. And that this will be a new plan going forward. They had good ideas about implementation as well. Not just to hand us off a plan when this process is completed. In other words, how, you know, how we can best move forward on it? Make sure it's implemented, something that doesn't just sit on the shelf. I drew this, I did not draw this as an emergency resolution. And I know we've had some discussion about that, you know, what's best. And I think we're gonna, it's gonna be made, I wouldn't say learning curve, but I, you know, transitional curve in a sense for council as to what type of the timeline we want to achieve things on. From our perspective, we'll let you know when we think it's something that is urgent in the sense that we need to pass. Ultimately, that's obviously going to be your discretion. But this is a good example of a non-emergency piece of legislation that in the event that you decide that you're comfortable with the work that the committee did and you're in a position to pass this tonight, it will not be effective until February nineteenth. So at that point in time, we could sign contracts and then we would start the process of forming a steering committee and move forward. That's fine. It's not like, you know, you know, on the other hand, if, if, on the other hand, if, if you decide to go to a second reading on February second, it wouldn't be effective until March the second. And if we did a full three readings on non-emergency legislation, it would not pass until February sixteenth, would not be effective until March sixteenth. So I say that for two reasons. One, I think it would be good to get this moving down the road. But on the other hand, if you feel like we need a second reading, you know, that's, I still think that's an operable, you know, timeframe for us in terms of getting started on this. But I think it's going to have application in other, in some of our other legislation that we understand that for non-emergency legislation, if it, if it doesn't pass until the third reading, we're, you're two months to an effective date. So we need to keep that in mind in terms of what timeline we want to achieve things going forward on different issues.
Another thing I'd like to mention about the, the process. We interviewed the three organizations on one day and then we got back together the next day. So we had time to sleep on it and discuss the three groups. And they were all very good. They, they gave excellent presentations. They were all, all three of them very well qualified. But this is the group that stood out and was ahead of the pack. We could have gone with any of the three and been very satisfied. But Pogmeier really just, you know, they obviously stepped up their game for us and they're, they're ready to go to help us out and feel very comfortable with them. Questions?
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me like we're looking at this, that they really want the community to be involved too.
Yes.
That they want to have open meetings so that everybody goes and gets the pressure.
Yeah. Oh, like I said, they, they talked about community involvement before we did. That's, that's a big thing for them. They realize that for any plan to be successful, the community has to, they have to have community buy-in. Yes, sir.
This is one of the members of the CAT committee. I know this is something we had to ask for. And thanks for bringing us forward. I know we initially had thought the numbers would be around a hundred thousand.
Right.
So surprised to see the numbers less. What were the numbers for the other two?
The highest one was around seventy-one, I believe, and the lowest one was about fifty-three.
This goes as continuity with the previous, you know, the company that did it. The only other thing I'd ask is if we could have some, pay some review of some of the surveys and stuff that will hopefully be included by the residents.
No question.
Okay.
No question. No, that's the, the components. There's going to be the public workshops. There's going to be certainly a survey. But and, and the next step, once we, you know, approve this, is forming that steering committee, which we expect to be somewhere between fifteen and twenty people. And we're going to work with our selection committee. We're going to invite people to indicate an interest and then try to select the most diverse group that we can, talented group, people that affiliate to reach consensus and can work well with others. And then those are the basic criteria, I think. And to put that group together and then the consultants will work directly with that group as well. And so for instance, with a survey, there'll be plenty, that'll be a group effort. That won't be something that they put together on their own.
Right.
Yeah.
One more question. I know over the last few months, we've had some back and forth about when people in the audience can ask questions. We initially was looking at the public comments and then there's some discussion during the committee meetings. What, what are we doing? Just so everybody's on the same page? Because I know there's at least one person here on the CAT committee, if he would like to say something. Would that be during the public comments or do we, we list councils?
I don't have a problem with it. Does anyone have a problem?
Judy and I talked about it and felt that as each committee has their meeting, the committee chair is, is their meeting to, you know, to take questions if they choose to or not. That is, each committee chairperson is their, is their meeting as they choose.
Fair enough.
And I do want to repeat, and if there's, you know, whatever you want to proceed in that regard. But we've talked about this committee and we talked about it, the composition of that at the previous meetings. And just to reiterate, we tried to make it as representative as we could. So we took a member from council, Mr. Cott. We took a member from the Citizens Advisory Panel, Mike Conwell. We included our zoning inspector, Barry Gano, and also our economic development expert, Jennifer Six. And so we had a pretty good, and then I was the fifth, I was the fifth wheel. So we tried to even begin, make sure we had a representative group in that, in the selection process.
And I could confirm that Mr. Anderson was indeed the fifth wheel.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Oh, I get, do we even want to start that tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we're starting a new thing tonight and Mr. Sedlak is to be the first one. Come to the podium to address. This way, the, the people watching the video will be able to see you. And next time we'll have Michael on there, so speak loudly. Yes, there's a miniature band. Don't set them off.
Mark Sedlak, Grove Road. Only question I have is, I think it was good that the committee was formed. People that you chose to pick, that's one of the three that submitted proposals. I think that's a good step forward. I'm glad that the citizens advisory panel are request to have the comprehensive plan looked at as opposed to moving forward with some small pieces. I think that was a great thing to do. My question is, is in regard to the steering committee. You had, we had the Citizens Advisory Panel where you asked for volunteers from the community to come in and discuss and talk about what people felt about development and what we thought the best approach would be. All I would ask is that for putting together the steering committee, that you may give priority to the people who already volunteered for that effort, some of whom you may not agree with their opinions, but at least they were willing to donate their time and felt strongly enough to become involved.
No, that's a good point. I, somebody, I don't have a problem with anybody disagreeing. I would speak for myself. Would anybody disagree with me?
Thank you.
Okay.
If you have nothing else, please.
And that's, you know, I've been a liberal. People disagree with me. Okay. I taught school for eight years and pretty much everybody, all my students disagreed with me on a regular basis. And then I did thirty-six years of press and trial law and it was all full of disagreements. But I think the elements and the, all three of, really, we drew a lot from all three of these consultants that we're going to be able to use. Some of the good ideas that some of the others had, I think we'll incorporate into what we do. And the, and the suggestion was first, why you want a diverse group? You want gender represented, you want age represented, you want geographic representation from the various wards. And you want the people who have technical skills. There is a suggestion that certainly there's representation from the planning and zoning commission. So that, that takes some seats. And to me then, and you guys, probably everybody in the room's served on a lot of different committees and commissions than I have, and some have been effective and some haven't. And I think what makes an effective group is not whether or not, we don't want everyone to agree with themselves. We want those diverse opinions, but we have to have people that are able to work with each other, who can disagree without being disagreeable. We got to have people that we can trust. We got to have people that there, you know, that there's no issues relative to integrity. So that when they speak, you know, that they, I think we have a duty to make sure that we, anybody we put on that committee is somebody that we know will tell the truth. And, and so because it's an important essence that eventually goes out to the community. I mean, this is, these things are always a big deal, but this one's going to be a really big deal. There's difference of opinion. One of the things I emphasize when we talk about and is for this project to be a unifying project for the community. So your point's well taken. You know, we got to have different voices. And, and at the end of the day, we want to have some type of unified vision as best we can. And that's going to take some compromise, you know? And that's going to, you know, that's take some compromise for the people on that committee. And so therefore, we got to have personalities who are capable of that as opposed to ones who maybe, there's only, they got one idea and we're not moving. We don't even want to hear it. Okay, well, I respect that, but that may not be the best person for a committee like this. So that's some of my general thoughts, but we'll share all that on our reading Monday to begin that process, to talk about, you know, the general makeup. And then we'll solicit interest from, from people. And I can, I certainly expect that there'll be representation from that citizens advisory panel.
And as Mr. Anderson mentioned before, the steering committee is going to be made up of fifteen to twenty people, which sounds like quite a few people. But while, while we're having our meetings, I got it down twenty people just like that on top of that to be a part of it. And that was just me. So you know, the other members of the group, they're going to have a separate list of people. So filling in twenty spaces is going to be challenging, but it's going to go very quickly too. Those seats are going to fill up quickly and, yeah, I think maybe we ought to have fifty or sixty people.
You can, you can, you can break it into groups too. You can, you can have some committees if you wanted certain people involved in the thing. I, I'd like to talk a little bit about the way the three concept and the time. My goal is to sometimes disagree and not be disagreeable. I, I saw your presentation with, with our predecessors and you talked about that quite a bit. And I think that's, that's, that's an honorable goal. I, I did have to look up the difference between the two works. One is basically just a jerk and the other one is, has a different opinion. With regard to waiving the three, let me explain a little bit of my philosophy and explain yours. One of the big complaints that I've heard through this community for, for years, and it's not just this community, it's, it's, it's very common, is, hey, I don't know what's going on. Next thing, you know, all of a sudden I wake up one day and, you know, they're paving my road. I didn't know they were going to pave my road. Well, truth be told, it's a little bit on that citizen's responsibility to reach out and find out what's happening in their community. These are available online. The agendas are available. Mr. Cott does a real good job of making sure they get pushed out so everybody sees the agenda. One of the things that I like about not waiving the three, so, so one thing that's been a, people on council, people in local government have said to me is, well, how do we get the word out? How do we tell these people? Are we supposed to put ads in the newspaper? Are we supposed to send a letter to everybody? No, but I think the first thing is, don't wait for three when it's not necessary. Because at least then it's on the agenda three different times. If it doesn't have any bearing, like the grant, you know, that I posed waiting for three on, there's three different times that it gets put out on Facebook, people read the agenda. Hey, wait a minute, this pickleball tennis court thing's up there. It's just an opportunity to get that buy-in from the community that I think we desperately need as a community that may be in flux, may be changing, the goals of the community may be changing. So all the more reason to have more visibility out there so that maybe just two or three percent less people can say, I didn't know we were doing a steering committee. That's my point. So if it's not necessary, I guess I'm going to always ask not to wait for three. You can disagree with me. Don't be disagreeable.
No.
And accounting on work is, and the major comment on one of the things you added is about timeliness and stuff. I know you and I had a conversation and it was my concerns about some of the boilerplate language at the end of all of our resolutions has had no effect of immediately on passage. And we had a good discussion there and I see that it's not on here. I would say thanks for listening and.
Okay, so getting back to resolution number twenty-two R zero four. Have council or members of committee have any other questions, comments? Anybody out here want to step up? Okay, then we'll ask to wait the three. No, just kidding. I, I absolutely agree on this that we should take, take a good place for second reading. And then next thing we've decided we need to take a third reading or not. So we'll, we'll ask for time. Moving on to resolution twenty-two R zero six. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with P-Fund Superior Sales for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Ford E four fifty chassis for lifetime ambulance remount for the fire department and declaring this to be an emergency. This is going to cost us one hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. And what we're doing is we're, we're buying the chassis and then we're taking the equipment off an old ambulance and putting it on the chassis and updating everything, all the lights, all the electronics, all the equipment inside. So that instead of buying a whole new unit, we're able to save money by reusing what we had. Last time we did this was three years ago, twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen we did it. And it was a hundred forty thousand to, to do the same thing. So two, three years, it's gone, you know, as you expect, it's gone up a little bit. But this is a two thousand twenty-three E four fifties. And we have with us our fire chief, Chief Leslie. Do you want to share anything?
This replaces our two thousand and ten.
Oh, okay.
So what this does is this replaces our two thousand and ten ambulance. That two thousand and ten has eighty thousand miles on it right now. Unfortunately, that two thousand and ten is out of service right now. It's been out of service since December because we have severe reliability issues with it. It's failed on two responses to two separate incidents. So it was pulled from service. So what that does is by, by having, we normally have three. We have two ambulances at station one, one ambulance at station two. What this does is now that we're down to the two ambulances, should we need service on one, even routine oil changes and things like that, that drops us down to one ambulance in the city while that's being serviced. So it's, it, it's very important for us to have that third ambulance and have it available. And then it is also available for additional calls. So while it only has eighty thousand, or yeah, eighty thousand two hundred miles on it, it's a, it's a six liter diesel. This is the last of our six liter diesels. The six liters had problems from the get-go. They were very maintenance heavy motor. This is the last one of those. And like I said, we put, we had it to our mechanic. We put three thousand dollars into it in the last quarter of two thousand twenty-one and it still didn't fix the problem. He has not been able to isolate and figure out what the problem is. So we just decided the best thing to do is take it out of service. So that's why I'm here tonight asking it. And it was too, in the five-year plan, because we were trying to go with the five-year plan. It was originally in the five-year plan for two thousand twenty-three to be done. So we're a year ahead, but it is a two thousand twenty-three chassis. So they'll be chassising it on a two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-two. So we're still kind of, while it's not calendar year two thousand twenty-three, we're still getting a twenty-three chassis.
Okay. And the fire department's always been very good with their money and making sure that they have finances that when they go to do something, they're, they're usually ready to go with it. What's the timeframe for getting this?
They have not been able to give us a time. They don't even have chassis yet on board. They have them ordered, but they have not been given anything from board as to when they can expect to receive.
So we just need them ready when they're ready.
Yes. We, this would, this would reserve us, by passing this, this would reserve us a chassis whenever it comes in. So we would be actually probably one of the first to get remounted if, once this gets passed.
Okay. Members of committee, council, questions?
We ask my questions.
Okay, I'm glad I did. Thank you for sending them through.
So I have, I have an extensive amount of experience with diesel engines. And I do know that two thousand and ten is a notoriously bad generation because they've had the DTF without the DEF. So.
Any other equipment that's in that two thousand and ten, twelve era that maybe doesn't be the last of them?
This is the last one. The other, we have a, we have a two thousand eighteen and a two thousand nineteen. Both of those are V-ten gas. So we, we totally run away from the diesels. This one is going to be, the chassis will be a big block Ford. They've done away, Ford's done away with the V-ten's. So it's going to be a big block V-eight. But they assure us that it's, power-wise, it won't be any different than the V-ten's. Which personally, I like the V-ten's. I thought they're a very good engine, a very good motor for the squads. But unfortunately, they're not available.
Okay, thank you. Anybody? Are we comfortable with waiving the three on this? And Chief Leslie did, did explain it in the, for the passive waiving the three readings. So we will ask, we will ask to waive the three. Thanks, sir. Thank you. Next, we have resolution twenty-two R zero seven. A resolution authorizing expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Fund declaring this an emergency for seven hundred forty thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and three cents. And these funds are for paving and for reimbursement to the public water system property owner to commit it to accepting water as part of the successful title EPA grant funding request incurred in expenses and access of the estimated offered by the city for installation of the water lines from the street to their buildings. Mr. Anderson, if you'd like to lead us on this?
Yeah, the, well, first of all, these are funds, this is the first style, they call it, of funds that are received by the City of New Franklin from the American Rescue Act plan. And the second will follow sometime in July or so, it'll be the same amount. So we need authorization from council as to how we expend those. The, the regulations and rules relative to what we can spend them on have changed pretty significantly in the last, what they call final rule from treasury. Up to that time, it was basically infrastructure, sewer water, limited purposes. They have expanded that now and it's, it's kind of simple, but it's kind of complex. To, for general purposes, that a city, as it's stated in here, that a city can accept, accept a standard allowance of ten million dollars at revenue loss and use any funds received up to that amount for governmental purposes. So we're not required to show a specific revenue loss due to COVID to, to be entitled to use these funds. They, we, every municipality is assumed to have a ten million dollar loss. Well, we didn't. And then when that's the case, we can expend the entire amount we receive up to that ten million dollars. So the shorthand form is we can use this for governmental purposes. The two governmental purposes that we're proposing authorization for, and this is general authorization, that's paving and that's reimbursement to these twelve public water system owners who made possible the water grant. We will follow with specific legislation as to each of us on the paving. And in fact, we hope to come with that as soon as the next meeting. Some specifics as to the prioritization and the amount that Brian would like to spend on paving and what roads would be paved, et cetera. So Brian tells me that he expects to have that before us and for your consideration at the next meeting. From the standpoint of being able to get on that. And we've got other legislation that we'll talk about in that regard. I guess to preview that, the thinking is the crack sealing and the the chip and seal, we would try to do in the county consortium. And the paving, last time around, we did that separately and it was more advantageous. And we look to do that again this time out. So the, the paving aspect of that, to use these funds for that purpose, do you think that makes sense? The, the segment that talks about reimbursement to these public water system owners, I don't know how much detail we need to go into. I sent some detail to you. I hope you had a chance to see it. This is really a culmination of the two-year process. And the short form is that we had business owners that told us they needed water on St. Rob ninety-three. Some of whom said that they'd have to relocate if they didn't get water on ninety-three. And as a result of that, we said, well, we got to find a way to get that, to make that happen. We talked to Aqua. We found out the price tag on that was going to be a little bit over four million dollars. And Aqua was willing to contribute about a million of that. And so how are we going to make this happen? Then we discovered that through the Ohio EPA, we could become eligible for a principal forgiveness loan, which would cover half of that four million dollars. But to be eligible for it, we had to compete with everybody else around the state, and we turned out, we were number one. And the reason we were able to do that was because the EPA is interested in, in eliminating public water systems. And these are McDonald's, Subway, uh, Dollar General, uh, community health. Uh, businesses, entities that have, uh, more than twenty-five people, customers or, or individuals more than sixty days a year, they have to have an EPA permit. Kevin's very conversant on this, and he can probably fill in the gaps, uh, to, uh, and EPA has to continue to check their water. And they wanted to get out of that business. And so when you're able to eliminate these public water systems, uh, the EPA is willing to assist you in your financing. So these twelve public water systems in, in New Franklin City Hall is the thirteenth, became critical to this application. And we needed to recruit these twelve businesses and see if they would say, listen, we need to be able to say, if the water comes, will you take it? And they ought to admit that they would take it if the water came. Uh, and, and so we, to make that attractive to them, to induce them to do that, uh, there, we, we extended some, uh, uh, some, some benefits to that. Aqua, it cut their impact fee. There's really three components, at, at least three components. There's the, there's the impact fee that the company charges you to do business with them. To kind of sign on, and now I'm an Aqua customer. Uh, there is the lot fee, which is, uh, what it costs based upon your front footage or your lot to help subsidize the expense of putting the pipe in the ground. Then there's the line fee that brings it from the street to your building, and then you have to cap the well. Uh, and so Aqua was willing to do a couple of things. Uh, they waived the impact fee. Uh, they reduced the lot fee for these twelve because they want to make this happen also. And then from the city's perspective, we did two things. Uh, we hired a consultant, uh, we had CT consultants, Sean Aiken, who was fabulous. Uh, and we conferred with them, and we conferred with Aqua in terms of what would, what might the standard fee be to cap a well? Now, this was twenty twenty. Uh, and, uh, what might, what's the standard, if there is such a thing, to, uh, per foot for the line fee from the street to the building? Uh, we were advised that that well cap was in the range of a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. We were advised that the line fee was somewhere in the range of a hundred dollars a foot. So to make this attractive enough to get the twelve, and we needed all twelve. Uh, what we proposed to them was, we would agree that we would cap, we would, that they would be responsible for a thousand dollars for capping the well, and they'd be responsible for fifteen dollars per foot to get the, the, the line, on the line fee. Uh, so we knew we were going to have to bear some of that expense if this thing flew. Uh, and, uh, and we did a preliminary estimate that, we figured it was going to be about a hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, we made, uh, that concession condition upon us getting a loan. So if we didn't get the principal forgiveness loan, you know, that was out the door. Uh, and with that, all twelve of them signed up. And, uh, and, and they committed, and we submitted the proposal, and we were number one in the state. And, uh, this four million dollar project became a two million dollar project. As sort of an anecdotal footnote to that, at that point in time, uh, originally Aqua was going to contribute a million towards that two million. And we did some negotiating with them, and they got them up to one point five million of the two million. And the city, if we got the loan, we would come to council and say, listen, the city's going to need to finance five hundred thousand dollars uh, of this four million dollar project, because that makes sense to get water up here to ninety-three. But we didn't have to do that because we had further discussions. And, and I should add that, that council was involved along the way on all of this. Uh, in January of two thousand, council approved the grant submission, they approved the, the CT consultants contract, and they also approved submitting the grant in January of twenty twenty. Uh, in February of twenty twenty-one, we had further discussions with Aqua. Uh, we agreed to extend their contract with the city, and they're really the only purveyor that makes any sense to us anyway, uh, to the fifteen years, kind of start over the fifteen years of the original contract. And in return for that, they agreed to finance the entire balance of the four million dollars. And so now this four million dollar project comes to the city of New Franklin, uh, and the expense is a hundred thousand, we expect it to be about a hundred thousand dollars. As it's happened now, we're starting to get some of the, uh, initial, uh, numbers in from, uh, from a couple, the water is in now, and I provided this to council. Uh, but there were, let's see, two entities have completed the process. And what we're asking them to do, what we're requiring them to do is, okay, do the work, uh, show us what you're going to do, and then once you pay for the work, then you apply to us for reimbursement. And we've had two of the public water systems who have completed that phase of it. Uh, and, uh, one of those two, uh, is seventy-six hundred and fifty-one dollars, and the other one is sixty-six hundred and ninety-one dollars. We have a third one that has the estimates but hasn't completed the work. That one is sixty-four hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, there's a fourth one that's in the middle of the process, and Mr. Powell had made some reference to it. And it's, it's, it's an unusual prod, uh, unusual one, uh, for all of these, and it's, uh, it's, it's an entity that's got five, uh, different tenants. And anyway, it's a more expensive deal, uh, it's going to be more expensive for them. Uh, we looked at the numbers, uh, based on their most recent estimate, and the city would be responsible if they go forward with the vendor that they're going to use. And I understand they're getting other estimates, but I haven't talked to them for the last couple of days. That would be twelve thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. So I took all four of those and added them together, and, uh, the average cost, if we averaged those four, comes out to eighty-three hundred and eighty-three dollars. And if we expended that for all twelve people, it comes to just a little bit, a one hundred thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, if I take the three lowest ones and treat the other one as somewhat aderational, the average comes out to eighty-three thousand. So somewhere between, probably to be fair, eighty and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the way this will all come in. Uh, it's not unexpected, it's something that, that I think council was aware of, this was the way we pitched it. I'm thrilled that we pitched it the way we did, because we've got a four million dollar project for a hundred thousand dollars. There were questions of, uh, what's the benefit to the rest of the community? And certainly, one of the benefits is, uh, the fact that we retain the businesses. Uh, and I think people understand the, the, the need to, to safeguard our revenue sources. And it, it provides the opportunity for, for some, uh, expansion in the business community as well. And in addition, because i- in the water business, uh, Aqua determines how many feet it's going to take to get the water out there, what's the total length of the project? And then they break that down, and they say, here's what it costs per foot. And here's what we're going to charge you when you run that in front of your house. Uh, and the, the lot fee, they call it the, uh, the lot fees, uh, would have been, there are, an additional, altogether on that stretch, there were about two hundred and eighty parcels. And so other than these twelve, there's about two hundred and seventy left, all right? And, uh, and they, uh, Aqua sent a letter to all of the property owners, uh, back in January of, uh, oh, one, uh, and let them know that, uh, the lot fee would have been fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars for them. But because we got the principal forgiveness, it was only going to be fifty-five hundred dollars if and when they sign up. And there's no mandatory signups. So if and when these people sign up, instead of having to be responsible for a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, lot fee, it's going to be fifty-five hundred dollars. The, uh, that, or if, if the two hundred and seventy parcels, they each will make, they'll each send, uh, they'd save potentially ten thousand dollars as another two point eight million. Now, they're not all going to sign up. Eventually, you know, the history is, when the well goes, you sign up for the water. But some people have already taken advantage of it, and, you know, choosing to do that proactively. So there's that additional benefit to the city as well and to the residents. So, uh, I really, I express it as a win-win, and I really think it is. We, I, I present this to you as, as an emergency resolution, so we can go forward with the paving. But I'd also like to be able to start paying these people because, you know, these twelve are cornerstones. You know, these are people that are already here and they invested here. Uh, and they made this whole project possible. Now, if they got to wait, they got to wait. Uh, but, you know, if there's a concern, fine, if you need to, you know, take more time, you do. But I think it's something straightforward, it's something that council's been aware of for a long time. And, and now this is the authorization to pay it from these funds, from the rescue plan funds. So that's what it's about.
Questions from committee, council, yes?
So I, I had sent an email to the mayor. I had a bunch of questions under items such as, essentially, we're paying for, you know, capital improvements on private property. And that was a concern of mine. Uh, he had some, some good comeback, there's some good feedback with, with what he basically just said. He, that was essentially, you know, he sent back a good description on that. So one of the things that I've, I've talked about for, for the last few years is transparency and just being consistent with our message. And I'm not being disagreeable, I'm just, I just want to point something out. And if we can just kind of tighten up some of that, where it's the same message regardless where you look, I think it'd be quite helpful. And it, it actually go a long ways in the community as far as believing everything we put out. So what I'm starting off with here is this is off the city's webpage, and this is under the, the water cap on the city's webpage. And it talks about, you know, it just says, thanks to the principal forgiveness loan from EPA, Aqua's investment in the project, along with the commitment from New Franklin businesses, there's no cost to the taxpayer. So we've got something on our webpage saying there's no cost to the taxpayer. But then we're here looking to approve a resolution for a hundred thousand dollars. You can see my point where there's some, there's a discrepancy in the message. And that's, that's my point, is I'd like to get the consistency there, where it's the same message regardless where you look at it and what it is. Uh, I, I know we're going to use COVID funds, and essentially those are taxpayer money because it was taxes that were paid to the Federal Reserve that was actually returned to us in the form of COVID money. So, I mean, although it is COVID money, I mean, it's still, we still have an obligation to be physically responsible with standing those funds. So to touch on one other thing here, we had, uh, you know, by, by not, by saying in this that there's no cost to the taxpayers, you know, you yourself said that we were on budget with this, and this is before we had the COVID money. So it was, there wasn't another cost. I, I guess my point is, it's just be consistent, it looks trivial, it hardly be more consistent on us. Uh, one of the other things in, in the email, we spoke, we spoke of the fifteen dollars per meter foot, the tie-in to business, but then for the residents, we're telling them it's going to be fifty dollars. It'd be nice just to see some, you know, to treat our residents as well as we treat our twelve businesses.
I'm sure you understand that, I mean, it should be a hundred foot.
I, I, I understand. So I guess my point is, you know, that the business, whatever business that may be, they're getting the benefit of bringing water to them. You know, they can get reduced, uh, rates on their insurance because now there's a water source directly in front of their property. Uh, they're getting the consistency of not dealing with EPA, they're getting the consistency of the quality of the water. There's other benefits they're getting that may even attract them to those locations. I don't think we need to give away the farm in order to get them to, to agree to it. So that's, that's my comment there. And I think that's all that I had on, on this one. Uh, one, a couple of other things here, on, on the road portion of it, do you know how much? Because I think there's what, seven hundred and some thousand in this account?
Yeah, that's current balance is listed in the resume.
So this is going to be in addition to what we had already planned on spending on roads? So let's say we're going to spend half a million of our normally budgeted money to road, road improvements. Is this going to be in addition to that?
We haven't designated a specific amount that we're going to spend this year, all right? But, uh, it, it was, we've talked informally, and I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, we can spend a million dollars on paving.
So that is my question, if we have a certain amount of our lot for twenty-two, this is going to be in addition to that?
No, it's to be part of. Oh, yeah, 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 correct, correct.
So, so my, 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 my point is by passing this, we're getting additional road work done. And if we can just get that project map out just so people know before the, the trucks are walking in their neighborhoods and putting the chip and seal on or whatever they're going to be doing as a partial debt replacement or replacement, or whatever we're doing, or they have an idea of what's coming before it's, it's there in the neighborhood.
And we've tried to do that for them in the past, but, um, that's, and then we're hopeful that we'll be able to do something similar again next year. And, you know, I expect the same final will be in place for that second stock, but who knows?
So is there, um, thankful for the thorough explanation? I have to agree that there's been quite a bit of confusion. I give you a lot of credit out campaigning, talking to people in the public about this water deal. It's, uh, you know, if you get it for free at no cost, which is what I understood, I did not watch every meeting, so I, I may have missed some of that. But I did have some people who were confused about what the cost would be, that they thought there would be some cost. I understood that there would be no cost. So now I guess it has been discussed, Mr. Cass and I talked, he was confident that it had been approved. This had been approved by council. What I would say is definitely with some clarity, some consistency means a lot. I also, do these have to be together? Do the roads and the water have to be on water, is there a reason that? It just kind of feels like, hey, we're doing this and giving this, they seem like two separate animals to me.
Well, we need, we need the authorization to expand the funds. I mean, this is our, this is the first resolution we've presented as to how we intend to spend these funds.
So there will be, there will be.
Well, no, no, I don't know at this point in time that we're going to have any other purposes. So this may be the, you know, as I wrote this and as I presented to you, my thinking is that these will be the, this is how we'll use this nonsense of these funds. And that's why it's in one resolution, so you can discuss them both at the same time. Uh, and your point, your point's well taken. Uh, I don't think we have enough time this evening to try to cover every piece of misinformation that came out in the last election. But I will take my responsibility on this. I said it, I did say it, I stand, you know, I apologize if anybody feels like they were misled. Uh, I didn't intend to mislead. Everybody had scars in my eyes from the fact that we had a four point two million dollar project, uh, and there's no mandatory tie-ins. But yes, I always, I, I knew what those, and, and there's the hope, you know, that maybe these costs wouldn't have come in. We didn't, you know, maybe they'll come in, well, maybe they, maybe they will. I, I didn't mean to mislead, but I take my responsibility for that. And I apologize for any confusion that, that I might have created in that regard. And, and I trusted others who disseminated misinformation in a campaign. I'm looking forward to them doing so.
So could the website be corrected?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from committee or council regarding twenty-two R zero seven?
Just one more, would, would it be out of line to ask if we put a cap on the amount we approve for expenditures on the water system?
Uh, yeah, because we don't know what that total number is at this point in time.
I mean, if we're estimating it's going to be a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that, we're going to have to see as these come in.
So I'm not sure if we were talking about the same location, my concern is, I'll say that's McDonald's.
Yeah, sure.
So, yeah, and some conversations, I mean, the last I heard was, it's like a forty-five thousand. So I, I, my concern is that we don't get ourselves pigeonholed into this, approve this, and then there's some other ones that come in at much.
To lay those concerns, there will be a separate resolution for payment of those specific funds.
Okay.
You'll have that opportunity to look at and approve them.
And they'll, so will they be, so ever you have the authority to spend anything up to ten thousand?
Right.
So anything under ten thousand, will you just handle, or will that come to council?
No, I think it's fair, you know, I, I'll present them all to you, and that's why I did this. In theory, we could have just paid everyone under ten thousand, we didn't have to pay it out of our funds. We don't even have to have this conversation. And the only ones I would have had to bring to you was anything that exceeded ten thousand dollars. But when you talk about transparency, that's why I'm doing this, so I will know. And I'll bring them one by one, they probably won't come one by one. You know, I've identified two of them for you, uh, already, and, um, but I've told those folks they may have to wait. And so, you know, probably, you know, you know, what we probably should do is give you a separate resolution, and then the question's going to be covered, you know, you know, are we going to need the multiple readings, and it may take two, three months to get the money to these people? Um, so I guess it's a question of what you folks are comfortable with. Whether you're comfortable with, uh, me paying these as they come, as long as they're less than ten thousand, and anything over ten thousand, I would have to bring that to you anyway.
I, I just want to make sure we don't get something submitted to us for, just say, an outlier of fifty thousand or something. And now we, are we obligated for the contracts you signed to pay whatever that number is, I guess is my question?
Yeah, it's, well, you know, of, of course, we've got to figure that one out, because the other side of the coin is, are they obligated to tie in like they said they would? And so I don't know if we're going to have any of those type of wars. I assumed that we might when this came down. Uh, and if it turns out for a vendor, then it's more expensive than they can bear right at this point. Now, the good news is Aqua, it's prescience on any of these. But that, that one you're talking about may come down to that. Because even though those numbers are pretty high because of the circumstances of, of that particular building, um, the, I, I saw the most recent estimate, I looked at the components that had to do with the line fee and the cap, and I already communicated back to the property owner, uh, that it would appear to us that the, uh, our responsibility, the city's responsibility, uh, would be the twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars, not the thirty grand or so that forty grand is going to have to pay. So, oh, we're not, we're not going to give away money. Uh, but we're going, we're going to honor, my intention would be to honor the agreement that we struck with these people because, again, it's a four million dollar project we have.
And I, I, we benefited from it for, I, I. And I, I, we benefited from it for, I, I don't disagree with that. My concern is, you know, right now it's a hundred or a hundred and twenty. And then as somebody who's, you know, you got Fisher and Cental, that's a long ways off.
Sure.
So, so some of those could be excessively more. Maybe someone's, next thing you know, we're looking at a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars now we're approving for these costs.
I, I can, I appreciate what you're saying. Uh, I don't, I don't see that coming. But, um, you know, from the, you know, from the makeup of the other, of the ones that we haven't heard from yet. So I don't anticipate that. I will tell you, if, if you told me from the beginning that the city was going to have to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get this four point two million dollar water project in, I'd have been thrilled. Uh, so, but I didn't, you know, I don't see it going anywhere near those numbers. I think our earlier projections are close. And, um, I guess it, it does beg that question, is, is council, oh, I'll wait till you take action on this thing. But if you, you know, is council comfortable with us go ahead and reimbursing if it's under ten? And if it's more than ten, you got to look at, you know, it's up to you, if, if you're comfortable with that. I think that would be, I think that would be the honorable thing to do for the city. In terms of trying to make these people whole.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Cox? Um, just as a point of education, for this resolution, like in the previous COVID resolutions that we had, which we had two, as you know, um, the one that came through Summit County and the one that came through the federal monies. We had to do a general piece of legislation that said in general what we were going to expend those funds for. And then for the breakdowns, as you remember, for the state of there. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that. That's the reason that this is written the way it is. And if I have any influence at all, I, I would like to see all of those listed on one resolution so that it's all there. It makes the, it makes, uh, the audit for the ARPA money much better when we have a list by resolution of all of them.
Well, we, and we can do one by one. They're not all of them.
Right, right. If we have that on a resolution, all of them.
All right, so you prefer if we, if, for instance, even ones pending to a separate resolution, that's fine.
Even if they have to do it in groups, we've got it. I, ARPA money, I just say, okay, it's resolution.
That's fine. That makes sense.
That would be better for me.
That's a good, okay, that's a good thing.
Any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cox, thank you for allowing comments during the community. Thank you for that change. My name is Robert A. P. M. at twelve fifteen Center Road. When I was reading about this proposal tonight, last couple days, I was running all around. But it was my understanding that the American Recovery Plan was for impacts due to COVID and government operations. That's my understanding. This, what we're talking about tonight is reimbursing the initial tie-in owners or people tying into the water system. For, um, you know, we, it was an agreement made so that there was support to do the water. My understanding, there's two hundred and eighty properties identified by Aqua, but my understanding, we only have fifteen that have taken. Right, so now we want to take funds that were tied for COVID and government operations and reimburse them to people who did a voluntary program. I don't think we should be using this taxpayer money for reimbursement. Leave it some other way for government funding, but not using this specific program. I'm also concerned that you're setting a precedent as much as what Kevin did in counseling. Uh, you're, that, um, when do you do the next tie-in? Do the next set of businesses that are going, that are going down the Ancestra Road? They're giving excessive cost funds for reimbursement, the initial twelve, but what about the next ones? What about the property owners, another two hundred and sixty-eight, that decide to tie in and get excessive costs? We've all, no, can't say we all. Those of us who have had construction, things done to our homes, to our businesses, you get an estimate and always know that there's going to be additional costs. Cause you really don't know until you start ripping things out or adding things in. So this was a voluntary program, as we stated, it's still stated that way on the website. And it, it concerns me that you're setting a precedent. That down the road, this is going to be a continuing request, not necessarily with using, um, ARP funds. It could be just, hey, you know, you helped the McDonald's out. Going to help out the church down the street or the pizza place down the street or that. I mean, we're just, this is not something we should be doing with these funds. I feel bad that people bought in, followed an agreement, and now they've got these extra costs. Whether it's a percentage that's reimbursed or not, I don't know. So I hope council takes those considerations. Okay, consideration.
Thank you.
Couldn't there be a legal requirement based on this precedent? I have no clue. I have zero legal knowledge.
I think it's more consistent, you can apply. I mean, I mean, seriously, your business extends to that regard. I mean, this is contractual issue. So we're not setting any precedent with this.
Cause they signed a contract.
Right, yeah, we signed it.
Is it fair to say that right now, the way they got the ARPA fund regulations written, we can use that money essentially the same as you could money in the general fund?
Yeah, in general, we can use it for governmental purposes. Yeah, yes.
Would there be any difference if we paid this one item, we'll call it the reimbursement, out of the general fund and use the ARPA money? I mean, it's one pocket for the other.
You know, absolutely. No, we could do it that way. And, and really, we had, you know, one of the things I indicated was that we would use these funds. That, you know, that, when I said no taxpayer funds, that we're going to use these, these funds as opposed to come out of general fund money. And, and that was, you know, that, that wasn't intended to be devious at, at that time. Because originally, the, when the first rule came out, when, you know, we received these funds in, uh, June of last year, July of last year. And, and we were advised they were coming, uh, early last year, before the water was even in the ground. And the, and the initial, uh, uses were limited to, uh, to infrastructure, sewer and water, including, and broadband. Sewer water and broadband, including, uh, project, existing projects. So we were four square within the original rule to be able to use these funds. At that point, we're sort of scratching our head and saying, exactly how are we going to use these funds? And are we going to be in a situation where we can't use the funds because we don't have a project to use them on? Or we're just going to have to invent a project? There's been this seven hundred and fifty, now, the good news is we don't have to declare, uh, until it's in twenty twenty-four. So we had time. Uh, but under the original parameters, this one was perfect. Okay, we know we can use it. It's an allowable use under the initial rule. Uh, and at that point in time, it didn't appear we could use it for a lot of, you know, much else. So, you know, I wasn't trying to be disingenuous when I said we weren't going to, it wasn't going to be paid out of general fund. Now, today, we could pay it out of general fund, all right? But it, it, it just seemed to me, since we had talked about spending this money, it allows us to have this conversation. Bring everybody up to speak about what that project was about. And I think that's, that's healthy in that sense. So the short answer is yes. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's this pocket and that pocket, but yes.
One of the things, just my thoughts of using ARPA money for would be something that benefits the entire population or a, a segment of it. And, and we're, I'm pulling down a trail on this or something. So one of the things we talk a lot about is increasing income in the city. And the way the current work environment is, one of the better ways to increase your income is a lot of people working remotely from home. And they've changed, they've made some changes to how the tax structure is. If you're working extra days from home, you can actually pay your income tax instead of that act of the ARPA. That can be paid in New Franklin. But if we could do something along those lines to make it more desirable for people to work from home. Example, you know, improve the broadband in the neighborhood or partner with somebody to do that. If we could use the ARPA funds for those purposes, I think the city would be, you know, would benefit greatly from that as well as the residents. You know, cause right now there's issues with people with child care, schools are closing, there's all these other things that kids rent that the normal person's working. But if we could do something to help alleviate that, give them better broadband, or give them something better that's going to help them work from home. But working from home now, they can do their, their income tax to Franklin instead of like, is that the act of the ARPA? And, and so win-win.
And, you know, I mean, I don't disagree with you. I think you're saying the same thing. The use of these ARPA funds for economic growth, economic recovery, well, that's exactly what this is. All right, that's exactly what this, that's exactly what we did. These funds are going to satisfy the commitment that we got from people that made the water project possible. And we had a contract with, with Aqua since two thousand and eight, and they hadn't laid a foot of pipe. Uh, and now it's at state ground ninety-three, okay? Four million dollars. So that's what this money is going for. That's, again, I'm not trying to, this is no shell game. That's what this money is all about. And that's why it was, that's why it wasn't a allowable use under the original rule. Because COVID was one thing. The COVID funds were to really offset, hey, everybody's hurting. You know, we're addressing these losses directly from COVID, all right? This is part of the, uh, the recovery act, okay? And the purpose is to, for econo, to assist in economic recovery for cities. Now, still tied to the, to the COVID pandemic, but it's all about economic recovery and growth. And so that's why this piece is, you know, that's why this fit, this piece fits so well. Because it is, you know, it's exactly for that purpose. Uh, and the broadband we're aware of, and, and you're probably aware that, you know, the county has a Summit County conference call on Tuesday. They're moving forward with that. Uh, they're, they're going to do five G to all thirty-one municipalities, townships and villages. It's going to be about a three hundred and thirty million dollar project. That's how we're using their ARPA money. Uh, and five G, and they talked about breaking ground on this before the year's out. And then five G will come to this building. Uh, and they're talking about, uh, vaults, every thousand feet of the line that will commit vendors in to, to, to move out from. Now, we know there's going to be more coming, more money coming for that as well. So that may be something that we talk about next year as well. Uh, but your points, yeah, it's well taken and that's what we're trying to do.
And I think one thing to, to keep in mind about this is, as the mayor mentioned, we had to have those twelve, uh, businesses agree to the project for the project to happen. So for, for the, for Aqua to even come in to New Franklin, uh, we had to have those businesses agree to sign up, uh, which then gave the EPA reason to give us the forgiveness loan to make the project happen, which then incentivized Aqua to make commitments also and to, uh, bring that total down to, you know, zero for the installation. But we still had our commitment to those property owners. Uh, without that, we wouldn't, we still would not have water within the city. And now that we have water in the city, now that's up to Aqua to expand that out to other business areas or to other, other residential areas. But without it being there in the first place, it wouldn't be going, you know, the possibility of going anywhere after that. So, uh, it is, is, uh, I think a, a good investment. I think the mayor did a great job of, uh, getting that to happen. And this is a cost and we knew that cost was there and we're committed to that.
That's a good comment. I think there's, there's so many of those numbers getting thrown around, taken away from the fact that without the twelve, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. They made a commitment and without it, we wouldn't have water here. And you might not need it and a lot of people you know might not need it, but there could be more people tying in and it's here. So that's my comment.
Well, I, I do agree with the twelve, but one of the major factors was that how P-FOS has, was the first in the state.
It turned out, as you know, it wasn't even actionable. Right? It wasn't actionable. It was right at the threshold.
Let me explain. So the, the level for the P-FOS was, the, the actual level was one forty-six and tested at one forty-five. So.
You stopped one by one. Cause they, they came back and said it wasn't actionable.
And one of the things, so, so if you remember, who, who called and told you it was a P-FOS, it would be, that it has an ARPA.
Uh, it was you, probably.
Yes.
Yeah, no.
So, so my, so my point is, the, I just want to just, just say my answer real quick. So the Northeast District, what they, nobody wanted to be the first in the state. The Northeast District ended up being the first in the state with this location here. And that was one of the heavy contributors in passing of that.
Well, in fact, it was, it was a piece that didn't hurt. But as you, as you know, and we could pull out, they, they go by a point system, all right? The, the, the heavy points were the PWSs. And the same thing is true again, there's a motorcycle going on right now. They want to eliminate the public water systems. It didn't hurt that there was that PFAS care. And we got some, the notoriety for better or for worse because we were first. And then it turned out not to be actionable. Okay, happy for that. But that didn't hurt us, but I'm not trying to, you know, to minimize. But I can show you the score sheets.
All right, that's it.
The points came from the public water systems. That's how we won this thing.
Any other questions, comments, or council, committee? Uh, are we comfortable waving it through? I am. I, I think we've expressed why, okay?
That was a good discussion. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, guys.
Let's see, what else do we have? I am done. And we will close the finance committee at seven zero seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next resolution is the Streets and Drainage, Mr. Cox?
Open Streets and Drainage at seven over seven. We have one piece of legislation this evening. Uh, we do let all members present. We have resolution number twenty-two dash R dash zero five. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to participate in the Summit County Engineers Regional Pavement Maintenance Program for twenty twenty-two and declaring an emergency. The mayor touched on this a little bit. This is just for our chip and seals. We can get on board with the county. We don't have our list of roads yet. Brian's working on that. But this just gets us in to say, yeah, we had it and get us in this bid so when we get our stuff, we can give it to the county. Anybody have any questions? Is there any reason I'll leave a date on this or if we can drop the bid and take it in this? All right, anything else for Streets and Drainage? Concerns, questions? All right, I think we will close at seven oh eight.
Do you have anything in committee?
I think you got one. I haven't seen one yet.
Oh.
Yes, I agree.
Please, you could have kissed him right on the.
I apologize. Can you forgive?
Yes.
All right.
All right, open our community announcement. Here we have seven ten.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two R O three. Second meeting for this. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept an Ohio Department of Natural Resources Ohio Nature Works grant for the construction of tennis pickleball court at the New Franklin Plaza Field Complex. And the point of this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. I suspect that there's going to be some discussion on this. Anyone on the phone?
My thought is we might want to add this input during the community input part of the regular meeting. While we can discuss it now, if that would be up to you.
Uh, I, I would be okay if you wanted to wait till the community, because we're, we're at the time again on this. So we'll go to the third meeting and have our discussion done at the end. That's okay? Is there anyone, uh, anything to bring up for community development?
I don't like stars and bells, John Dogg.
Yes. I will close at, uh, seven eleven.
Does anyone else have any comments for the meeting? Then I would like to call over to the City of New Franklin, make a review, January eighth.
Welcome to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stopp?
Here.
We have an approval of the minute for the regularly scheduled meeting of January fifth.
So move.
Seven.
First and second?
I'm sorry, with the first. And the second, Mr. Powell, thank you. Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Do we want to approve the second meeting also? So that would be the regular, the organizational, organizational meeting of January fifth.
So move. Second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
And we have an approval of the financials for December two thousand twenty-one, seventh to August.
So move. Second.
You have approval for the second? You have approval for the second? Go on.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We have public comments, and we ask that you put your comments to the floor and come up and speak.
I'd like to say something too. If, due to the, you know, years ago, we used to have a podium, and the people kind of felt uncomfortable. So I don't think we have to make people come up if they would like to stand up and talk. I think that's fine, and I mean, that's just how I feel. We did it years ago, and people felt more comfortable to stand up than walk here to the podium. But you can go, I mean, it should be an option.
Okay.
So I'm sitting in chair, and we sure, there's somebody who would like to join us there.
Just have a couple, three quick things. First, I'd like to applaud our Service Department for the great job they did cleaning up after the snowstorm. The second item, I talked to, this is for the mayor. I did talk to Dan Looman at Valley Energy Solar, and he apologized for not being able to get back to you. He and his entire family had COVID. But they've all already covered nicely. But he is, and he says he has a plan for later, and he was gonna get hold of, wherever he was supposed to get a hold of the scheduled meeting, to come in and show you what the plan was. This is about PD solar for the city.
And while you're standing up there, I got, I want to talk to you about another idea that's developed in solar, which probably is a private conversation, but I jogged my memory, maybe before you leave, I'll have a chance to do it.
Sure. And then the third item I have goes back to the November council meeting, when I brought up an issue that made me a sore subject, with Mayor Adamson. But as of today, the New Franklin businesses page of the New Franklin city website, there's still a PDF of a planning, a city planning document that was put together by Jennifer Stix, this woman who's inside, that was presented to the state, that still shows high-density housing. And there is nothing on that page that shows a disclaimer that that has not been decided by the city. And my reason for keeping bringing this up is that I fear the potential for a business, potentially looking to site a new Franklin, to see that document and say, oh, we're gonna have this population density to support our business, so we'll move here. And then they make a commitment to move here. And then all of a sudden, they find out, oh, well, you know, we're not gonna have this population density, these high-density houses to support our business. And does that open the city up to liability? And at that point, does it then become a priority to change zone to allow for high-density housing? So that's my concern. You stated clearly and emphatically in November that you would put a disclaimer of some sort on, if you go back and watch the video, that you would put something like, you would put your name in it. Something to play that.
I don't want to be personal about it. I'll go back and look at the video again. I think that's been pretty thoroughly vetted, and.
But there's still nothing there.
And I will tell you that, so I'll go back and see the video. If I ever said I was gonna put a disclaimer, or I just spoke.
Or something to that effect, that we are not considering high-density housing.
No, I got you, I understand that.
That's actually all I'm asking for.
I understand that. And as I replied before, first of all, you'd have to go deep into what the definition of high residential has to do with in the first place, in the business sector, and you know, you guys, you know.
I'm a business owner.
And you know what it means in the business sector, okay? And it doesn't mean high-rise AMH, you know, it means smaller lots, and it could mean senior retirement housing.
So be. The apartment links to.
The fact that it was so contentious has made me reluctant to remove it. And because it's a historical document, I wouldn't want anybody to think that I took it down because we're trying to hide something, which, of course, we weren't, because that's where it was in the first place, right on the city's website. So, and I will tell you this too, Mark, and I got a ton of respect for you, but you're the only person who asked me this, okay? I'm not getting calls on a regular basis of people saying, hey, when are you gonna correct that graphic, okay? You're the only, nor have I, okay? But.
And I'm not asking you to change the document.
So if you, if it would be helpful, and I don't know where I put this, quite frankly, but I'll have to figure it out, because that's a separate document.
Your statement on.
So maybe I would clarify it to some degree, if there's been some confusion about what high-density means. I'm not even sure what that statement would be, because we've never had any discussion with anybody about that. That was an artist's rendition that was used for a presentation, that was never presented to council as an idea for development. It was a tool that was used at a seminar because they were plotting us on getting the water grants. So it was never part of the city's agenda, it was never part of the city's plan. It just happens to be a document that sits on the city's website.
Yes.
So I'm not exactly sure what I'd be disclaiming.
Well, it just seems to me that there's a very strong resistance of putting in writing what you said in a meeting when there were 30-some or 40-some people there in this council hall who were up in arms about high-density housing.
Right.
This side of, you know, John drove that whole section in there, and the other section down further south. And those people, you assuage their concerns in no uncertain terms verbally, but I get to see that in writing.
Well, did I say anything different then than I'm saying to you right now?
No, but words mean something. And you say it, that's one thing. Put it in writing, there's a record of it. That's all I'm asking you to do. So.
I'll give it some consideration, but I appreciate what you're saying. I'll give some consideration if it makes somebody sleep better tonight. Again, I wish there were a lot of things that people, misinformation that was corrected that made people sleep better at New Franklin tonight. I can't cure all of it, but if you think this piece is helpful, I'll give it some consideration.
Yeah, in the November meeting, you actually said you already did.
Well, I agree. I can't remember how many times could I do it?
You said you put it in writing. You said you had written it online.
I think it was on the Facebook pages, it was on my campaign page, I think it showed up on The Voice. I displace, you know, I dismembered that. Yeah, so I did put it online.
But it's not on my website. It's not where that document is, that's what he's asking.
Well, I get what he's asking for, Jack.
And nobody's gonna come to you with what they come to us of.
Yeah.
Because.
It may be helpful, I don't, you know, I'll give it some serious consideration.
Okay.
Does anyone else have anything?
Good evening. I'm Benjamin Blondin, I'm new to New Franklin, Western Bud Lake Road.
Good member.
944. I just wanted to kind of talk about the broadband and the 5G and things like that. If anybody's aware of the health effects of the actual 5G, if there's been any studies on it or anything like that. The village that I moved from, I kind of was lead on this in 2018, to try to get ahead of it, to not allow it near the houses, because I think, and a lot of other people think, that there's such significant health effects. So I just asked you guys to, I could send you some documents and maybe read something about it. I just have a couple quotes. Dr. Sharon Goldberg, an internal medicine physician and professor, gives her testimony regarding the dangers of electromagnetic radiation. She says wireless radiation has biological effects, period. If you guys are aware of what the FCC did in 2018, on September 26, they granted themselves powers to further this 5G agenda, basically restricting what the local municipalities can actually do about it. So I just wanted to kind of touch on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a recommendation to offer?
Yeah, yeah, if your email's on the website, yeah.
Then. Does anyone else have any comments?
Oh, yeah. Yeah?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question first? I'm Joe Hercules, 50, 60, Karen Drive. Will you be taking action on the defense courts grant today, do you?
I know, we're gonna be asking for talk for what we're reading.
Do you want to speak on that, Joe?
Would like to speak on that, okay.
You're welcome to come up, and you can see him when you are. Can you show us your pretty face?
I can't show it because I had COVID last week.
Oh.
I was required to keep this mask on, so I'm sorry. I hope you can understand and hear me. My name is Joe Hercules, I'm the president of the Manchester Local School Board. I believe it was in April 2021, I signed an agreement to give the city a piece of district building property for the purpose of tennis and the local sports. Since I am here specifically to address this issue and to speak only to council, I will put it this way. The role of council is to represent the will of the people and be good stewards of the city's resources. So in this case, a $50,000 grant, I believe, has some property as its stake. Would it be good stewardship to see this opportunity wasted? I understand the bids came in high and the grant came in low. Is that a good reason to throw away the free land and the $50,000? My opinion is no. I understand the resistance to overspend, and maybe the project will only be, will only be able to move forward partially at this time, one in pieces. But what is the motivation to not move forward? A few residents worried about their view from their home. If the courts are not built in two years, the land returns to the district. Would the local residents prefer to see tennis courts where residents of all ages can congregate, exercise, and enjoy a resource of the city? Or they prefer to view a new bus garage or district storage building, which is, which will break the view neither? Currently, Manchester tennis players have no local facilities. The district rents or borrows courts from neighboring communities. By the way, all of our neighboring communities provide courts for their schools. Norton, Coventry, Northwest, Green, Barberton. All the same communities whose districts overlap the New Franklin. So some New Franklin students are provided courts by their districts while Manchester students are not. Why is it that if you live in New Franklin and go to Barberton, Coventry, Northwest, or Norton, your students have home courts on which to play already? But if you live in Manchester, they have to drive to Barberton or Green, not only for home matches, but also for practice every day? That was great liability for former districts and the parents of the students' struggling. And what is the wasted time driving? It's time for me, Franklin council, to step up and provide what all of our neighboring communities already provide. I'm not an economist, but inflation means the cost will only be going up. By the same token, if we take on debt, the value of that debt goes down. Now is the time to move forward, step up and build something the whole community can use. Please quit kicking the can down the road.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Resolution Number 22-R-04. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Ossomeyer Design Group to conduct a comprehensive plan update.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, and we're gonna ask for time on Resolution 22-R-04.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to participate in the Summit County Engineers Regional Pavement Maintenance Program for 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Excuse me. That was, came up in the Streets and Drainage Committee, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings on Resolution Number 22-R-05.
Second. First and second?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-R-05. Second.
Mr. Daniels? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Resolution Number. Resolution Number 22-R-06.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with D-Fund Superior Sales for the purchase of a 2023 Ford E450 chassis for lifeline ambulance remount for the fire department and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22-R-06.
Second. You have first and second?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22-R-06.
Second.
You have first and second?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Resolution 22-R-07.
A resolution authorizing expenditure from the American Rescue Plan Fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22-R-07.
Second. You have first and second?
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22-R-07.
Second.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Resolution 22-P, that's the 720. Resolution R, I'm sorry, 22-R-03.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept an Ohio Department of Natural Resources Ohio Nature Works grant for the construction of tennis pickleball courts at the New Franklin Sisler Field Complex and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution was assigned to community development, and we're asking for time.
I was asked for time to be taken, and we have the third reading and the pending legislation. So then, your favorite part of the evening call?
Time will tell if that prevails, but we'll see.
I'll be saying it anyway, maybe just get what you're saying.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm echoing the Service Department, talking about above and beyond the call. Thank you, Mark, for pointing that out. And, man, our leader there was coming off a sick bed too. And heroic is not an exaggeration for what he did. And the leadership that he and Dale Corley have in that department, and the men, my goodness. So I can't thank them enough. The tennis courts, I just want to, I want to clear up a couple things that came up last meeting. The project period does go through December 31, 2023, for that grant. There was a question about prevailing wage, it is a prevailing wage bid. There was a question about the stormwater permits, those were obtained prior to the bids going out. So the permits were all in place prior to the bids going out. And that stormwater is an important issue, we get that, but it was addressed. There was a question about title. The title was recorded on October 27 of 2021, and the grant was awarded. We got the notification, the grant award on November 5 of 2021. And in front of the beginning, we let ODNR know that we were acquiring property, and that was in the grant. Tim Robinson, I think, was the point man for ODNR, I had constant communications with him as to us being able to take title. And as Mr. Hercules knows, these things are always slow, and it was even slower. There was some taxing that shouldn't have been that was sitting on the property, that took forever to get that off. And then the property was still titled in the name of the East Franklin Local School District. And so it had to be transferred to the Manchester local, and it's just stuff that happened during the process or would have recorded much sooner. We kept ODNR advised of that all the way along the way. They knew that, and they understood. I do want to talk about this briefly, on this petition from the pickleball players. I didn't pass that, I told them, I didn't circulate the thing, I told the guys it'd be a good idea if they, you know, it would be supportive. That document itself, and you can see it on the grant application, is indicated it's from area pickleball players. So it was never represented that these guys were New Franklin guys. And in addition, on the petition itself, they had a place for them to list the city that they came from. So there was no attempt to target this league. But the notion that a pickleball court is good for a community, I think that's something ODNR looks at. Not just necessarily is it going to be used exclusively by New Franklin people, but is it something that is going to be available for people in the area? And I think for for a city that matters in terms as well, that there's value to people coming from outside the area. But that's another story. I just want to be clear about that petition. It clearly, it was indicated it came from the area of pickleball players. There was some discussion somewhere about that it had been represented that this was going to be that this project was going to be exclusively grant funding. And I don't know if any of you heard that, but somebody certainly did that. I think you could all agree, we've never ever discussed that this was going to be all grant funded. We always knew that it was going to be, you know, that it was going to be funded through, you know, through part funding, but through general funding, et cetera. One way or another, to borrow the money or finance ourselves, but it was never suggested it was going to be all grants. Still floating around out there, we did make a grant. We did an AARP grant. We got turned down on that. And we, through Jared Brown's offices, we submitted a grant proposal request for the fiscal year 2022 congressional appropriations, which when we submitted that, there was maybe that was maybe a little too optimistic to think that the 2022 budget was going to be passed by Congress in October of 2021. Well, we all know that hasn't happened. So I don't know when that happened. I don't know if anybody knows when that happened. But that's still out there and we're not counting, you know, that's a long shot. But I just want to clear up that issue as well. And that's all I got on that. I just wanted to try to clear up any confusion on some of those areas relative to the tennis courts. On the more mundane, we have ward boundaries. Our charter, Article 4.02, requires that we reassess ward boundaries after each census. And I'm sorry to report that you guys are on, no. No, it look, we don't expect there to be any changes, but we are required to assess that. I've talked to the Board of Elections about this. We're in the process right now of checking the census records. The criteria in our charter is that the ward population can't deviate by more than 20% between the lowest population and the highest population currently. We're within those numbers. We don't expect there's going to be any need to change the boundary. If it turns out that they're not compliant with that 20%, then we'll have to take a look. And eventually that'll be up to council to approve something, unless it does something to you. So, but we don't think we'll have to do that. We did get confirmation a day or two ago. Actually, January 13th, congratulations, New Franklin is receiving a NOPEC Energize Community NEC grant of $7,576 for 2022. And we've been receiving that grant annually and we can use that for energy related projects. We don't know what that's going to be just yet, or we might want to try to apply that, but that's a little bit more grant money coming into the city. There is a career fair at Corning Slakes JBS on March the 4th. And we have notified our local businesses. And everybody knows how difficult it is to find employees. And there's a wide range of skill sets up there at the JBS. And so they're hosting a career fair on March the 4th. There's information on our website, or if you can give us a call and we'll hook you up with whoever you need to talk to to get involved with that from a business perspective. I am pleased to announce that on Sunday, I'll be delivering a proclamation to Dalton DiRocco when he is inducted into the Eagle Corps of Honor. So we have yet another Eagle Scout coming from New Franklin. And Dalton's Eagle Scout project was a construction of the the stage that we're using over at the Tudor House. And we've used it a lot. And so that was his project and it's a nice piece. And so we're honored to, we're happy for him and his family and I'll deliver that proclamation on Sunday. This last one, Brian will kill me for bringing this one up. But when the plows go, when the plows go flying down the street and they gotta go, I know it's driven one. But I know it's no easy task. You better know what you're doing. And you gotta keep your speed up. And the more snow there is, it gets kicked off. Occasionally, if a mailbox is not, you know, really tightly secured, the mailbox can suffer damage. So we've had that in the past. We have no formal policy on that. Informally, where it's, you know, if we have somebody who's really infirm and it's just clear that they can't take care of this, our Service Department has taken care of that for them. We have not adopted a policy where we're going to fix every single one of them, because then you really never know what kind of shape it was in before we hit it. And we don't have to buy 5,500 mailboxes. But we've received, you know, a number of policies time around. And I just wonder what council's thoughts are. Should we, should we think about trying to fix these or Mr. Powell?
So that is actually one of the guidance I had for new business. I happen to be familiar with another community that has a policy. I was actually, I got the email already drafted to send to you guys as an example. I was going to see if there's any appetite on council's part to look at creating that policy and moving forward with it. It wouldn't be a multiple time per year and it's a minimum cost that you would give back to the resident. They've got to provide proof, pictures or whatever, send somebody out to look at it. And really, at the end of the day, it's like, let's just say $75, what it does, it buys them a standard metal mailbox. It buys them a wooden post and they put it in, they do all that. It's just a matter of if, and I understood that if the snow gets heavy, you got salt mixed in with it. It gets these smushes, a lot of weight and force coming off the curl of that blade. It just, it's a nice thing to do on the city's end to kind of help offset any of the costs that they're going to, you know, incur from that debt issue. So I can send it to you here in a minute minutes, but it gives a nice little example in there, you know, the spacing with the mailbox should be back in the road. Some guidance on doing that. And we've had really good feedback on that.
The only thing I just would comment on is, if somebody's got a mailbox that's just in toll, disarray, ready to fall over and it wouldn't take much, if there's a little bit of snow hits it, then we just find some green mailbox.
So your life won't be sure about that. So it's an honor system. I mean, at the end of the day. How soon do you do these programs? There was, and there's a lot of nice mailboxes out there, so that's why we set limits on. And really, it's just the basic, you get them back, they get the mail delivered to them.
Well, if you do that, we'll take a look and let council take a look at it and all of us. I mean, in the interim, I think we're certainly going to do what we have done in the sense of if we, if there's a clear hardship with somebody, our service guys are going to step up. And I'll just kind of deal with it on a case by case in the end.
Yeah, you get up in the Lake Ganga County, actually Bureau of County. Pretty much everybody, if they're on the road, that's where I could create that type of force coming from the plow because the plow is moving at 35, 45, 50 miles an hour. They have snowboards in front of their mailboxes to prevent the mailbox from being damaged. So the snow hits those snowboards. They're aware of it. They're not expecting the county, the city, the state to reimburse them. If their mailbox goes down, their mailbox goes down and they replace it. So, you know, does everybody in New Franklin need a snowboard?
No.
But if you live on the street where, you know, the traffic is going to be going at 40 miles an hour or, you know, the plow is going to be doing. That's something that you may invest in for your, for yourselves. And those are homemade, you know, pieces of wood that they stick it around there. And, you know, as you said, Mr. Anderson, if there's somebody with a true need, well, of course, we're going to take care of them. But to have a policy to just, you know, replace mailboxes, as Mr. Cox said, you know, we have no idea the condition of it, you know. I mean, you sure, it could be an honor system, absolutely. I just don't know that we need to have a policy for that. I think this is something that if there's a true need, we take care of like we take care of everybody in our community that has a true need. But for the most part, if you're in a situation where you have to lose your mailbox, be prepared. We only really have those situations every few years. You know, it's not like this is every month or every year type thing that we get snowballs that create that, you know, possibility. So that's not.
None of it's in there. You probably just have one more comment on that. I mean, keep in mind, we just passed a resolution for about $120,000 to benefit 12 property owners. So it's just, it's a small.
It doesn't benefit 12 property owners. It benefits the entire city. You're limiting it down to 12 property owners and that's not the case. So I wish you would quit saying it that way because that's not true. Now, those 12 property owners help the entire city benefit from something. Okay, so yes, that's a whole separate thing. And yes, we're spending $100,000 on it possibly. But this is, this is something, this is completely different subject. And if we want to do it as council, if that's what we want to do, fine, you know. I don't, I'm not going to, you know, say no, no, no. But I was my opinion as to why I don't think we need to do it and just continue what we're doing.
So that's indefinite. No, no, no.
No, it's not definite. No, no, no. But what it is, all I can know is no, no, no.
I was really going to try to be quiet on one. But I lost my mailbox last year to a snowplow. And I went out and replaced it. I had the means to do it. I kind of like the idea of we live in a small community, so it's not hard for the Service Department to make a 30 second judgment call to say, well, the mailbox was backed on up. It deserves to be replaced. It makes sense. So I don't, I don't think there's a necessity for a policy. This is, you know, if it's the honor system, if we have a policy, now it's the honor system for the city. So hopefully our citizens have the faith and the judgment of the city. And if somebody picks up the phone and raises, holy heck, I would imagine we'd probably step up and deal with it. I don't think it's a huge problem. All right, and that's all I have? Yeah. It wasn't bad at all?
No, it wasn't bad.
Susan, just kind of in line with what the mayor was saying about the NOPEC, we also got another grant through their community services and they give out like $750 a year in grant money. And we every year go after that and we use that toward our shredding day, which we have again gotten that grant for this year. And we are having it in April this year. We haven't got the exact date yet, but I looked at the calendar and have it for you. But it'll be here as usual. And normally this covers at least part of the cost of the shredding day itself. But it's a good, it usually goes well for all the businesses and the people in the city who really like using that money for that purpose.
Those people take advantage of that.
They really do. They really do. It's, I think it's been very helpful for people. As you know, you have your December totals, so a lot of them will give you some a look into the end of the year. Because some of the reports, like the expense report, are not just December reports. They're for that up until the end of the year, so they're all here. I am reviewing the year-to-date reports to make sure everything's in line so that I can close. And then you will be getting the year-to-date reports as well. And then we will turn ourselves over into the new year and work on the rest of the deadlines that are due before, before the first. So that's what we're doing.
So this, this sheet, I just want to get my head wrapped around, this is the the state of the cash positions with month-to-date totals. So that's the each fund basically end of the year at that?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure it'll come out in one folder, but when you look at that, you can presume that's.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Do we have anything for old business?
When do you talk about pickleball? Is that old business because it's a?
Could be either one. We've been talking about it a long time. So I would say.
So I want to just throw a couple of things out that I've learned over the last couple of weeks since this got continued. One, I want to make it clear that I am not against pickleball or tennis in any way, shape, or form. I am for getting more input from the community. I am for getting more information out to the community. And I think, as I've said, having more readings when it's not necessary to do it, to waive the three, I think it's good. Helping for the community, it's more volume. I was really hoping to see a lot of people here tonight. I've asked a number of the people who have sent us emails in full support of this to show up. Thank you very much, Mr. Hercules, for being here. Hopefully, when we get time, we're looking at the actual, the actual project, hopefully people will show up because that's what we want. We want community involvement. We want, we want that volume. I think that's really important. I was really curious, one of the things that struck me as odd at this, at the very onset was that it was for the Manchester School District. And I have wondered for years what the balance is between Manchester residents and all the other residents. Well, I figured it out to the best of my ability using voter registration. I'm sure the county with the tax district could probably nail it down better, but it's about 6240, 6238. Yeah, yeah, I knew it was around 65 percent. 65, so 65, 35, somewhere around there. So all of this is in the. The Manchester School District. Right. So an interesting, this is just a statement, you know, it's a continuing discussion. But when we made the shift from property tax to the income tax and let that one let you pay away the. The one police levy. Yeah, the one police levy. I mean, it wasn't a total shift, but it was, it was a slight change in the direction of that tax. It was a pretty small levy. Go to Europe, you're not wrong. Right. So the district, or the largest employer in the city of New Franklin, is Manchester Local School District. So it was something that made me kind of rationalize the concept of spending for Manchester schools because those teachers, those administrators, that staff, they pay more income tax than anybody else in the city. Now, hopefully that'll change because you can now register with this, is it the state or the county that you registered to get here? Does anybody know how to do that? We need to figure out how to do that. I didn't do mine. She's not the employer too. All right, so I think, I think there could be a windfall. I, you know, I know there are a number of people that work for ODOT that have to work from home. They're not allowed to come to work and they pay two and a half percent because they've got a jet on top of their locals. So they could save a half a percent by moving their money back here. So in any case, that was just something that I found that made a little rationalization of it. Another idea that I had, when you said December 2023, so that's the end of the agreement with the school for the property? No, no, that's the grant. That's the grant. Yeah, okay. So we don't have to act on the grant now. Just go ahead. Well, no, it responds to a couple of things you said. No, we really don't. Now, by the same token, we're not committing ourselves in any way by accepting the grant. I think everybody understands that. But the grant isn't going to matter until we do the project. Unless there's a commitment to do the project, then that's what's going to follow. And that's when I, you know, like you, I hope that we'll see people here. That'll happen with opening the bids the 26th. We're going to see how these bids come out. January 26th. Yeah, and then my intention is to put a resolution together, the council. And to, that would specify exactly how, you know, what are they? What, what, what did we think makes sense that we're asking you to approve? Are we going to ask you to approve just the base bid? Are we going to ask you to approve any of the ordinance? Depending on how those costs come in. And I think, and we would spell out the financing aspect of it, how we would intend to do that. And then that's really where the discussion comes. And we expect, we've done the bid process such that clearly this is one that I expect we're going to want to have three readings on. And, you know, whether I present it to you as an emergency so that it would be effective after the third reading, may do that. Because if in fact it's approved, then we want to get started. There's a timeline to get going. And also, you know, as you well know, the bids are only good for an extended period of time. So we got to make sure action, the council takes action that's consistent with how long these, these people are locked into their bidding. So that's really when the discussion comes on. This, this, the granting can lag along with that. But, you know, I would suggest that you address it the next meeting because you're not binding yourself to anything. You've had a full three readings. And then we've accepted it, but it's continued on a student project. And the last thing I want to say is this, there's no question that the Manchester schools are partners in this thing in the sense of donating the land. We put in the application that we were going to give preference to the areas, all the area schools relative to use, not just Manchester. So I don't want it to be perceived as a Manchester schools project. And again, I'm not trying to shift anything. I mean, this is, I mean, there's no question, I think there's a strong reason to say when 65% of the city, you know, in the district, well, it makes sense, you know, to stick this thing there and they're the ones that donated the land, et cetera. And on top of that, it's, you know, and I know we have disagreement on this. To me, that's, that's the place for it because it's right in the lower sports complex. But this is something that's, I wouldn't bring this if it was just to build tennis courts for Manchester High School. And I know a lot of, of the support has come from different tennis coaches that talk about how many players we got. That's a big deal to me because these are all New Franklin residents. But if that were the only reason, I would never have brought it here. This is, this is tennis courts for the community and pickleball courts for the community. And I don't want to get too far ahead of myself because we're going to do this three more times. All right, but you know, this is, this is a legacy item.
But, you know, this is, this is a legacy item, okay? You know, if, if, if we'd have waited until we had the money to build system, the system would never have been built. Uh, there comes a point in time, you know, over the next ten years, we're going to plow a lot of roads, we're going to pave a lot of roads, you know, we're going to answer a lot of police calls, we're going to answer a lot of EMS calls, and we're going to do a good job of all that. And at the end of ten years, you're really not going to have anything tangible to show people, here's what we did, okay? But if this happens, ten years from now, we're going to, there's going to be tennis courts and pickleball courts out there that are going to serve this community for a long time. Uh, and, and serve it well, and, and bolster the, the persona. And, and all, every little bit makes people want to live here. You know, we got declining enrollment, we do count on, and, and, you know, the population out here. So it's just really, you know, it's, it's for the seniors, it's for the adults, I mean, anyway. I don't want to get too far, but I mean, I, I'm not trying to sell, that's why I'm behind it. But, so again, I'm sorry to go on so long, but, uh, if it were only to build tennis courts for Manchester, I would never have brought this. Uh, this is to build tennis courts and pickleball courts for New Franklin. But I appreciate the.
I have one last hypothetical. And, um, so the, the Nemisilla building is going to be raised by the state, so that definitely will. That's part of the package. That's, that's in the deal.
Yes.
That's not a debatable, but.
That's their business, I don't worry.
Okay. Well, last time you said, you said you weren't sure. And it, it, the annex is not.
Okay. Oh, all right, all right.
But Nemisilla is. The other thing that comes with that is that, that, that they will make the ground, they'll leave it however you want to leave it. If you want to leave it to build another building, or I, I don't know the detail of that, obviously. But if this project does get cut into pieces, um, you know, I think that piece of property, the goal of the, of the school district is to abandon that entire piece of property at some point down the road. Whether it be the, the bus garage, whatever, however, even a common bus, bus garage, moving possibly. So that piece would be primed for some nice development and possibly some type of retirement, uh, fifty-five-plus community of some sort, um, you know. How cool would that be for pickleball to be the center of a development like that?
I want to come give you a hug, though.
Well, well, but see that, where, where I'm at with this, though, is if it were to get separated.
Yeah, possible.
Could that possibly be a piece of this where it could be have to spend, you know? I, I'm.
No, that's, everything's on the table.
I'm at the beginning of this, I'm learning, it's just my second meeting.
Yeah.
I'm trying to gather information, I'm trying to get information out at the beginning.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm at.
No. That's okay, so when you move my soapbox.
I don't think he wants to hug me anymore, so.
No, I'm still there, I mean, you know, I'm still there. No, the understanding of, you know, the forward look and, and what might, you know, what, what we might want to do with that. Because by then, you know, yeah.
It is going to be a prime piece of property.
Well, no doubt about it.
I've got a few comments actually to kind of follow along with that. You know, I, I'm an analytical person, I like to look at the data that's come in and kind of categorize it into the different areas and stuff. So I, I looked at, you know, we had eleven emails, I think, that, that we saw that came in. Of those eleven emails, I think nine of them were kind of a result of an email that had went out, you know, that you were talking with the Nets Committee. And those are from coaches from other communities. They're not necessarily, you know, New Franklin residents. And they had valuable information that they were given about the reports and everything else. So I'm not taking a stand either way, I'm just pointing out a few things here. Then we had two emails from the people in the Nets Committee. And then we had two emails from people who, I'll just call them residents. And one of those was actually, I think, a daughter of somebody on the Nets Committee. So I guess my point there is, I'm not seeing a ton of people getting a hold of us outside of the Nets Committee or the people in Nets Committee that's contacted. And then I look at the letters that you forwarded and there are nine, I think there are eight or nine letters. I, I have eight listed here. And those eight people were on the Nets Committee. So it'd be nice to see tennis team merged, somebody else coming out in numbers showing support for this because at this time, it's just people being solicited from the Nets Committee to show support. So you can see my point there. I mean, this is a big investment and I'd just like to see the support. I've seen some, some comments on some Facebook posts and stuff, but once again, some of those are being driven by people off the Nets Committee. So if the, if this is truly a community project, I'd like to see the community get completely behind it. Which, which is, is kind of, it's just, from my point of view, it's kind of missing on some. So I'm sitting here, we got another reading on, on the, uh, on the grant. It'd just be nice, you know, hopefully people see this and maybe it's come out in force. But that's one of the things I notice that's missing there. Uh, one of the other items is, there, there's a lady that lives on Drake that had talked about some, some stormwater issues in her backyard, flooding and everything else. And we're going to be removing all, all this area and replacing the impervious pavement. Can we or have we looked at that stream to see what the impacts will be? And maybe try, try to correct the issue that this lady's had in the current, before this thing even gets underway?
Uh, I'd have to defer to Brian on that. I mean, I know there's already been work done in that area to address, to, you know, address some of the drainage problems in the past. I know it's something that the engineer looked at. And we, I mean, it's, as you well know, they're, they're well aware that that's a concern.
And I think just not too long, they, they still have no problem. So I know there's some stormwater retention ponds and stuff on us, but there, there's still going to be some trickle-down effect. And I want to make sure that if this were to go forward, we're not making life more miserable for some, some of our residents.
Well, I mean, part of that has to do with the stormwater permits as well, right? In, in terms of their analysis of the plan.
Well, they're, they're, they're concrete, but, yeah, I mean, if there's issues we're not aware of.
Well, I just answered it. Yeah, not at all. And, you know, I, I will say this, uh, you know, in terms of, I mean, sometimes, I, I get it. It'd be nice if the room was full of people who say, we want tennis courts, you know, and somebody involved, you know. I, I, I fully respect the position of the folks that prefer not to go in that location and, and lose the trees. I haven't, I haven't heard a whole lot of opposition to people saying, we just don't want tennis and pickleball courts out here. So I haven't heard that, I haven't heard the naysayers much either. And, you know, I'm not, I don't know how much we're getting from, you know, from those people, but it doesn't necessarily reach my ears. We haven't heard too much of it here from this room, uh, of people saying, no, I don't want this project. Uh, and I also think this too, that sometimes it's, you know, there's, what you guys are going to have to weigh, you men and women, is, is this something that's good for the community? Is this something that fits? It doesn't necessarily have to be, we got, we could have a hundred people say we want it, and you might say it's a bad idea. Okay? So I, you know, well, it's helpful to hear from people that come and say they want it. I think the bigger question is, do you see this as a piece that's, that's good for us as a, as a community? Uh, does it fill the need of, uh, athletic opportunities, for recreational activity for our adults and for our seniors? You know, those were two areas in, in two thousand and four that, that the citizens said that, that it was poor. All right? That they needed more. Uh, they wanted more for the adults, they wanted more for the seniors. So is this something that we should do that's good for the community? Is it an attractive piece to the community? Is it a missing piece to the community? I mean, I think that's maybe the bigger question than a straw poll of how many people show up here and say they want it or don't want it. But again, that's going to be you guys' decision.
The concern I'm at and heard is when people find out the eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar price tag is the, is the. When it started at six hundred minus one fifty, so it went from four fifty to eight thirty, that's a big jump.
No, and I get it, and nobody's happy about that, you know? But I think that, um, I think, again, to be fair, to get people a fair look, that the project, when it's, when it's paid for, will have been paid for exclusively with either grant money or parks funds. And we're fortunate enough that we can self-finance it. And so, yeah, initially we use general fund. And then we have to reimburse that through park funds and there's that contra, that other argument, okay, or it's enough to be able to do, you know, whatever's left. But I think we got to keep in mind that that's what the people wanted as well. You know, that charter was adopted in oh-six, the comprehensive plan came out in oh-four. And when the charter was adopted, they put in the provision that said five percent of that income tax has to be used for capital projects for parks. So I think there was a direction that came from the people that said, we want this type of thing. And we want that parks money to be used. So I, I, I understand it, Jack, it's a big number, but it's parks money, you know? Uh, if we waited around to accumulate it, um, as I said, we wouldn't have a system, so.
Old business? I'm not sure if this is old or new business, but have we ever thought about, uh, like tennis courts? Are we still under a state of emergency?
We are.
And have we seen anything from the state to, uh, change that state?
Well, actually, no, and not from the county. The county's still in a state of emergency as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
No indication of when that would change?
No.
All right. I just don't want that to lag out.
No, no, until the madness stops and, uh, and chief of us, he could tell you that as well. And, and I don't want to take this too far afield, but when we talk about, uh, why we are still emergent, we have our, uh, EMS units, um, dropping, going to hospitals and waiting three, two, three, four, or five hours to be able to, uh, transfer that patient into the hospital because there's no room to put. And, uh, uh, that's the current state of affairs. And, and that unit's sitting over there at, at Barbenburg, it's not out here ready to respond to one of our calls. So there's the protocol that the chief, uh, the chief's association adopted and, and, uh, our fire department enacted a policy to try to address that in conjunction with, I'm sorry, I don't want you to steal your thunder. In conjunction with, you know, with, uh, with the hospitals, that will try to limit this to an hour. Uh, that's how bad it is. That, uh, where it used to be, they, they'd bring them in, they'd wheel them into the exam room, they'd give them the history, and away we go, and we're back in service. And now we're sitting over there in the emergency room for two, three, four hours hoping the phone doesn't ring here with another one. Um, so nothing, I think we're probably going to be in it for several more months.
Okay. Uh, Penner Road Bridge, any updates on that?
Uh, it's moving along and it's, uh, and I think, you know, once the thaw comes and the, they were waiting for a park. Uh, a big park, I can't remember what park it was, but.
That's true. It was a big park, that.
But they expected to have it by spring. And, and the, the one thing that has happened, it's been closed entirely, it was always supposed to be closed. And they kept stealing the barricades and throwing them in the trash and he put new ones up and they barricaded again. And ODOT finally said, listen, you got it. So, uh, Brian proceeded, I think they put the big cement barricades now so that they can't use it because meanwhile, the condition of the bridges, it continues to deteriorate. So it is officially and fully closed right now, uh, and we expect construction to start in spring.
Okay. So all I have for old business?
Any update on Civic Plus and the status of the guys' website?
Uh, it's moving right along. Yeah, yeah, it's moving along its original timeframe. I think she said May, but I meant somewhere in that range.
Any other?
No, we're excited about that because it's going to be important for the council, so.
Any other old, new business?
Yeah, new business. So once again, I'll, I'll forward the email if you decide to move forward, the mailbox is great, if not, great. Uh, one of the things I, I wanted to bring up, to see if council had any appetite for, was that we're, we're starting to approach the storm season here in a few months. Uh, and we know how the, the spring and the fall storms get, even through the summer. I live in the northern part of town and whenever we get severe weather, I hear the barberrin whistle going off. But let me know that, you know, there's, there's, so if you're outside and not listening to your phone and stuff, you have no way of knowing. So a project that I've worked on, uh, in my professional career, uh, we were able to secure grants for about sixty to seventy percent of installing sirens to the community. And I didn't know, I, I would be willing to track those down, see if those are still available and bring that back and we can let whoever does the grant writing, who before that. I talked a little bit with Chief Leslie about that for the start, there's some stuff to be talked about. But if that's an interest in council, I'd be willing to have you to get that information together.
We'll pull out the old files on that. We took a hard look at that. It was about quite a few years ago, maybe fifteen. And it was extremely expensive because of the topography of the city. And it was like, well, we can service some of the city, but we can't service all of the city. And all of a sudden, wait a minute, they get a siren and I don't, you know? And, uh, that's kind of where that one died on the vine. But I'm certainly more than pleased to, to revive it and see if there's, there's money available for this.
If council signed with that, I'll get some information from whatever funding may be available and pour that out.
I would agree. You can also get the morning sun to come to you when you're on.
You can, but if you're on, yeah, not everybody has a phone, not everyone has a social media.
Right, right. I just think that the people that do have the, the phones, which is a lot of people, should have that app on there.
Susan, could you point out about the tax that, uh, Jack was talking about, the income tax, with the.
Um, actually, what you can do.
Sorry.
I was going to say, for me, the conversation went on, so I didn't. Um, they, I was in a webinar with Rita, um, last week, I believe. And, um, they, it was one where they had people that do the taxes as well. Um, and they were telling people that basically the, uh, tax preparers, that there are forms that they can do for their clients to take care of and change for, uh, for, for those that work at home and to be, be able to get, um, you know, whether it's a reimbursement or to have those in a company, so, or another entity. So you can do that through Rita and through your tax preparer. So it is possible to do that, you don't have to, you know, uh, do it all by yourself or sign up. You can just do it through your tax preparer.
Okay, thank you.
The only qualifier I put on that is that, as you know, you can do that now, but there's, there's litigation working down the tracks on that, that may undo that. And, uh, so it, it may create additional comp, complications for somebody who maybe puts it in place now and then the court case changes. And that's why, from the city standpoint, I didn't want to take a particular position on it and encourage people to do it. And then all of a sudden, the court case comes around and everybody's tangled up in red tape and wondering how that happened, so. I, every individual's got to figure it out and after themselves.
Yeah, because it's only twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two that that's.
Yeah.
True.
It stays the same through twenty-two.
New business? Is there any chance we can start looking to go paperless? Uh, you know, just this week, I have twenty-five sheets of paper. Every two weeks we get paid, every two weeks we'd be up there. We get to pay huge, huge amounts of money, yeah. On this thick colored sheet of paper with coloring on it is my pay stub. Every employee gets this pay stub. And any other, pretty much any other corporation from five employees up, you want a pay stub, you go online and see it. You, you don't, you don't get a pay stub anymore. It just doesn't happen. You know, I'm using my personal computer here, uh, to see how effective it is to be able to use a computer as opposed to having these sheets of paper to go by. I find it easy for me. Uh, I'm able to, to put notes on everything, uh, just as if I were writing it by hand. Uh, I, I can put notes on here as we go along. Uh, I, I'd like to see us get to the point where, uh, we provide council and any other department that needs it, the, the proper equipment to be able to do this, uh, where everything's emailed to us. We, we don't need to have pieces of paper. I mean, you know, and, and we got twenty-five this week. Sometimes it's a lot thicker. It's crazy the amount of paper we go through. Uh, and then a lot of this paper has to be stored, like, you know, instead of it being electronic. Please.
I have to defer to, whatever council's preferences.
Does anybody need paper copies anymore? Because I'd be happy to stop doing that. I really would be.
Yeah, as you know, I send you all your reports via email, so you don't have a paper copy of that.
You guys want to think about it?
But, but you will pass out paper copies to us. Uh, and, you know, I mean, at the, for the year-end and, and for the appropriations and stuff like that, that comes out paper. But, but, but I, I appreciate that every month those reports are coming to an email and not being in our file, so.
Yeah, and for those kinds of things, you, most people don't have, bring their laptop or anything with them, so they need something to be able to look at while we're discussing it. But, um, yeah, I send those via email as well. But the, part of that information has to be included in the resolution, so obviously it's going to have to be, have some copies made anyway. But if you want to use that and have that at your disposal, I'm fine because I, I already email it to you anyway.
Well, I think, uh, instead of each of us using our personal devices, if we even have such personal device to use, I, I think the city should provide council, uh, and any other department with proper equipment to do that and to get us moving. Yeah, we've, we've got to do one second. We are moving, we are moving in that direction. Yeah, twenty, twenty twenty, we're coming. Maybe twenty twenty-two, but twenty twenty, we're coming.
We, years ago, yeah, we checked on the cost of it and then everybody just said, well, it's worth it. Uh, and then whose, whose, um, you know, iPad was it? What do you, what do you buy? Because everybody, you guys can figure it out. Because everybody, you guys can figure it out, I mean, you can decide what you'd like to do on your, on your own, and, and I can give you prices like we did the last time. Fine, it's fine with me, all the departments have computers, whether they be desktop or iPads or what have you, so, so they, um, you know, they, and they get their reports electronically too, right? So, so I mean, we try to limit, however, quite frankly, there's no way, God's green earth, that you're going to get rid of all the paper as far as government is concerned right now, because even with your personnel files, we have to keep those for like, over a year, so, um, you know, it's just not going to completely happen, but we have tried to send things out rather than produce more paper all of a sudden. But it won't have, it won't ever go to zero, but we certainly continue to try to limit that.
When Kelly sends these out, um, if somebody wants to work from their tablet, they can bring a tablet and work from that. If somebody would prefer to have paper, I presume you could just print it out and bring the paper. And so council could decide that they want to bring the paper, or that I want to bring a tablet or, or a laptop. Um, if we get into, and you guys, if, if you decide everybody should have a laptop, that's great, uh, if we have to, first thing that comes to my mind is everything on there's public record, uh, you know, that's so you would be able to use it exclusively for, which I'm sure you would, but, you know, then it becomes, is, is a really cost-effective tool based on the, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need a computer, and I don't need this. I make enough money, I can print 15.
The green, we're responsible for, but the, the.
I will discontinue, that would be great.
Yeah, is that what everybody wants? Is everybody, I'll print what I want.
I'll just email. Fabulous. Any, Mr. Hargett, are you a believer in that?
It's become a moot point from, from a nice few comments.
I'll get back to you on this paper, there's a reason for the green paper, but I'll talk to my staff about that. There's some reason they like the green paper, and I'm not going to go into it. Well, I'll get back to you.
No, I could have private information on it, I can see where that.
Well, we have to have copies of that, but, I mean, we can do it, but we don't have the, I mean, other than emailing them out to everybody, the old-fashioned way, we don't have that, that, uh, in VIT, you can have that add-on, that on, which costs money to be able to do that part, and we don't have that built into our, the system we have now. Because VIT has lots of add-ons, as you know, you know, Christine.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience have any questions and comments?
Yes.
Like you, Mr. Daniels, I swear I was going to keep my mouth shut.
You want to go up there, Sharon, or do you want to sit where you were?
Am I okay here?
You're perfect.
I talk about.
You need your name and your address.
Uh, Sharon, 781 Yager Road. I was one of the people that lost my mailbox, and I was the only one that I could tell on Yager Road that that happened to, so I'm trying not to take that personally. A lot of people know where I live, and it was sturdy, sturdy.
I may have to come for that one.
No, I've got a chop saw, I'll get it. Um, you know, just a little bit of confusion, I guess, about the Nature Works grant, when, when I first started coming to meetings in October, I went back and looked at the grant application, and there were four stipulations for doing any kind of application for that grant, and one of those stipulations was that title needed to be held by the applying entity. Um, I understand that Nature Works is taking grants from 88 counties, they don't want to give a grant and then have somebody say, oh, we thought that we were going to get that property and it fell through, you know, go to somebody else. That just makes a problem. So in October, I called Tim Robinson, the ODNR Nature Works Director, and said, look, uh, you know, you've got this grant, but the city doesn't hold title to it at this point. And he said, oh, yeah, they do, and he went and looked in the application, and he said, you know, they've got, um, a title here for 11 acres, which is the Sisler property in its entirety, not the new piece of property. So at that point, he told me that he was going to call me or Adamson and figure out what was going on, and that was in October, and that grant went in in June. So when he called me back in October, he said, the city certainly inferred in their application that they held title. So, um, at that point, from what he said to me, he was not aware that title was being held, um, or what was going on with it, he just had information that wasn't accurate at that point. Um, also, we talked a little bit tonight about school districts in New Brunswick that have tennis courts, and I did some calling around about that quite some time ago. Northwest doesn't have a tennis team, so they have no courts. Um, Coventry pays to use Greens Courts because they don't have any courts. Um, Norton does use the city courts, but they don't have preference for those, so they have some trouble getting on and off of those courts when they're able to do so. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, I will make a point to share with you, uh, and the public, emails between myself and Tim Robinson. I looked at it today, all right? Uh, I looked at, and it was an ongoing deal, and we clarified that when we applied, we knew full well we didn't have title at the time. We weren't trying to sneak anything by ODNR, we told them from the beginning, and what we were told was as long as we had title by the time the grant was awarded, that we'd have to have title before they would award the grant, okay? So, Tim, whatever discussion we had with you, he's, he's, uh, failure in his recollection, but I will share with you.
Well, that's 88 counties and probably six or seven.
Right. I mean, the ones I looked at today was September. For instance, I'm back and forth with Tim, and I'm saying, Tim, there's a glitch in the title, we're working on a title, fine, let, keep me posted.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll share those with you.
Okay, if you could, that'd be great.
I sure will.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All this thing, it's okay.
It's perfect.
Sharon, 671 County, I'm sure. Um, two points. First off, I want to, um, say thanks to the Red Department. This is the first year since it hasn't discontinued, um, plowing the south end of Mission and Comet, it's gotten done, and then, and I think that's, that was appreciated. And then secondly, for the law courts and the tennis courts. Um, I know we've talked about negotiating and working them together and whatever, and I don't think, I don't think the, the concern so much is do we need tennis courts or do we want tennis courts? Um, but the location and, and we go about putting them up and the maintenance and costs afterwards down the road, and do they have to be where pickleball courts are, as was talked about perhaps, it's better to have a separate location for pickleball courts or for older community tennis courts for students and the trees and stuff.
Anybody else that you can?
Actually, I have two questions, and I can just give the questions, and then you guys can do whatever order you would like. Um, with the pickleball courts and tennis courts and the review of the comprehensive plan, I know that, that review process, from what I saw on the city's website, it's going to take about a year, with, between all the meetings and gathering of data. And then, if we have a new comprehensive plan, would that include, like, athletic facilities of the city, making it maybe more central located instead of being spread out amongst the neighborhoods, or maybe putting athletic complexes in the different, for lack of the term, wards? I don't know, but I just would, you know, maybe since there's some questions about what we're doing at Sisler, maybe we wait till that comprehensive plan comes out and maybe add it to the comprehensive plan. So that's my question, is that something that can be considered, putting it on? My second question is, on the financial reports, can they be posted on the city's website?
I think we'd ask that with them, and they should.
I know, I'd ask.
Yeah, they, they can be.
Wait, after they're approved, and not, you know, once they're approved.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think that we're asking the correct question. Will we do that, is what we want to know.
That's another way of doing it.
Because they can, it can be done. That was your question, yes, it can be.
Will it?
Will we do it?
Yes, thank you.
That's, that's your question.
That, thank you.
It's fine with me, I just have to tell, send them to Katie, and she has to put them up.
Is everybody on council in agreement with that, or you're okay with that?
Just public information, absolutely.
Thank you. Continue whatever you want.
And if I could, one response on that, uh, first of all, the comprehensive plan is going to be just that, and, and, and they'll seek input, you know, community desires, what makes sense, planning, I'm sure they'll have recommendations to us based on the, what the citizens say in terms of recreation. They didn't make specific, uh, I don't know, and I've reviewed some other plans, I'm not sure that we're going to see a, a specific recommendation to put X here, okay? Uh, but I will say this, that I, I do believe that, that, you know, the Sisler Park was a product of the 2004 comprehensive plan. I mean, I, I fully believe that. Okay, that thing came out in '04, and in '06, that plant, plant was drawn for Sisler, which included the baseball fields, and I, I know, when I was here, it was in direct response to the fact that people said they want more, you know? And so, that, that's sort of been done, in a sense, I say to you. I think it's, it's, obviously it needs to be revisited, but that's where that came from, that 2006 plan that you see, came from recommendations out of the 2004 comprehensive plan.
And what you're basically saying is that they need decide on the comprehensive plan that they would like to see them elsewhere for different things.
I don't know the answer.
Not that, not that, not the ones that you're talking about building.
Other places.
In addition to.
Sure.
They may decide to have, they may recommend more depending upon, like Jack was talking about senior housing.
Yeah.
Very, Paul, what just, regarding Sisler and that, is having coached softball teams that played at Sisler and was being a spectator at Sisler. Um, the lack of facilities, dressing facilities, a picnic area, or, and concession stands. And I know I sent an email to them, they are saying, I would like to see that, that's my wish list. Um, but I think we would have a bigger draw because of the three baseball field, I mean, softball fields, baseball fields there, that if we added those to that area, it would, you know, I think, have more of a draw. I know there were many complaints, being a coach and spectator, that there's just no facilities, and that there's really no place within the immediate, say, one mile radius or two mile radius, unless you come up to McDonald's, you come up to Subway, you know, like, maybe add those features, because even if you put tennis courts or pickleball courts, you're still going to need some type of facilities there, so, just wanted to add my.
No, I can't, I'll let you go.
You know, I can see, well, we talked about this years ago.
Yeah. No, I, I, you guys, boy, kids today, you know, they want so much.
You're right.
You know, because I coached down here for 25 years, and you guys have a seat here and you tell that, you know, the way we used to start the season, uh, at, we were lucky to get on a field anywhere, and when we started the season at Lockhart, every practice, we'd line up on first base, the whole team, and then we'd walk across the field and pick up the rocks and throw the rocks off there so somebody didn't get killed. And when anybody dragged them, and when anybody landed them, said he wasn't doing anything. Well, it was a township back then. So we have come a long way, and I'm sensitive to your concerns there, and the Parks Commission is, is, we're still looking at a, a more, um, a less ambitious, uh, pavilion type of a, for the, for the, so we're still, that's still on the radar, and we're talking about that, actually looking at and see if we can bring that along with the other, uh, something similar we have at Lockhart. Whether you get into concession stands, that makes sense down the road, restroom, permanent restrooms, in my view, it's, it's going to depend on, you know, I want to see if we're going to, I would want to see if we're going to do the tennis project, because if we are, then, uh, some type of permanent restroom, we, where does it belong? Where should it be? Right now, we got baseball up here, and we got soccer over here, and we got soccer back there, and we got something in the middle, and if we put restrooms up here right where the baseball is, that's not going to service tennis courts if we have tennis courts. So we're already looking at a, at a piece that's about halfway between those, that would be something further down the road to put some permanent restrooms in, so, we're not, yeah, so we're, we're thinking, you know, we're talking about those things and thinking about those things.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I'll just correct my statement, Northwest does not have tennis teams, you're correct, but Valphorton does have public courts, and Coventry does use their own tennis courts for practice, they only go out for home matches. Their tennis courts are in too bad of shape to host matches, but they do practice on their own courts.
Well, glad you said that, because I, I did, this is good when there was something you said about the maintenance, and I did look into that, and, uh, the court surfaces, et cetera, the way they do them these days are generally, you can rely on the first three years, you're not going to have any problems, and the basic maintenance after